Uh, first item is the Ponghorn Crossing variance request. Abe, I'll let you kick it off.
So before us today is a variance application submitted by Moyes Family Homes on Ponghorn Crossing subdivision. In Greenfield six block. Uh, this, uh, I'll do my best. There's quite a bit of history here, but this project went to planning and zoning last week for a public hearing. And there's a recommendation included in the order before from the planning and zoning commission, which I'll get to in a second. This project came, so if you've driven up to Ponghorn Crossing, you can see that there's now eight houses under construction. Four of those went under construction in two thousand twenty-four. Those were fully permitted and everything is fine with those houses. At some point this summer, the exact dates, I don't have in front of me, but the town staff realized that there's additional construction going on that had not been permitted. And that's of three homes, uh, three homes. And when we found it, there was three homes. We met with Moyes Family Homes and they've worked to, uh, we had conversations about those building permit packages and they've taken responsibility for building without a permit. Once they got those permit applications turned in, uh, town staff noticed that the setbacks are five feet and we had a conversation. There were so many conversations during the development process. I remember having the conversation and doing side yard setbacks different from the seven and seven. And however, when I went back into the Minnesota, we're not approved with the original subdivision. The only variances approved in the original subdivision of Ponghorn Crossing was that the front yards could have a setback at fifteen feet on the home, still twenty feet on the garage. And that's throughout the entire subdivision. As well as any lot that abuts Buckboard Avenue and Lynnfield Avenue, um, have, those are designated as rear yard instead of two front yards with two, like with a public tree on each side. Um, that allows them to have a taller fence back there and some other things by code. So those two variances were approved at the subdivision of Ponghorn Crossing. Though lots of discussion took place on site setbacks, and I remember many conversations with the developer throughout that course of time. It did not get considered under public hearing or approved by the town council as a variance, meaning staff could not permit those buildings as, as submitted under application or as constructed. We went through the, with the applicant, the different options of what they could do. One option being that they could replat certain parcel lines to fit the side setbacks, uh, one that they could tear down, the construction they had begun and make it fully conforming with the side setback. Or number three was a variance. The fourth option is, I guess, some combination of those those first three items. Um, but right now, the three houses that are out there, um, the three houses that were started earlier this summer are non-conforming to the town code. Once those were found to be non-conforming, we consulted with Ed Wood and we did submit a letter, um, to the applicant applicant halting construction at the time of, um, that notice and they have complied fully with a halt of construction. No construction has taken place since early July when those letters were submitted. So before you, there, what the applicant has chose to do is to request a variance application on the whole of Ponghorn Crossing to change the side set yard, the side setback requirements in, um, subdivision, which is consists of some R two, mostly R two. I'm sorry, mostly R four in the corner of R two. Maybe I have those two swapped, but it's R two and R four, sorry. And, uh, two from seven and seven to nine and five alternating where the building envelope remains fourteen feet apart. Um, but it would give them more side on one side of their building, um, to park additional vehicles, et cetera. The, I will say from the standpoint of the town, uh, other things that do exist in that subdivision um, are no parking on the street, law completion, and some of those things that were discussed at the council level, prom preliminary plat acceptance package two years ago. This went to planning and zoning, um, and let me back up one more thing. So the applicant has made this request. They own all but two parcels. Uh, two other parcels are owned by private individuals at this point in time who are living in their homes. They have both, uh, it's my understanding, agreed to sign an affidavit to any changes and accept the changes of this variance and kind of be a, if you will, a co-applicant or willing to work with the developer to align that in the entire subdivision. This went to planning and zoning last week under a public hearing. Um, it was discussed for probably an hour. Um, I would say uh, the planning and zoning's motion is, it's quite impactful of a motion, um, but the motion was, um, the recommendation was to deny the variance, uh, for the lack of, that nothing was caused by the developer, which is one of the things in planning and zoning reviews, they do feel this was caused by the developer. And that there's, uh, no circum, there were special circumstances or conditions, um, applying to the land vegetating vegetation or building for which the adjustment is sought, then would take away their ability to use the land how it's intended to be used. Uh, they did indicate in their motion, um, that they have no real problems with trying to work and be creative within this, but the language of a variance does not really, uh, make you feel that they could approve it based on a strict language of the code. They did make a recommendation that, uh, stuff that may be logical or stuff that may benefit community members, that there may be some revisions considered by town council, the code on certain variances to allow some subjectivity on benefits that are felt to be allowed. That's kind of a separate request, but it was part of their motion. So it's all that moving in the letter. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I know the applicant is here. If you would like to fill in the blanks, I will turn it back to you and get whatever information you guys need.
So to be clear, we're looking at five foot and nine foot, which would marry up. So every, every house would have fourteen feet between it and just be five foot on one side. On house A, five foot and house B next to it would have nine foot. So there would be a, a total of fourteen feet between each home on a setback side.
There is a couple of conditions that if you guys were to approve, the variance staff would recommend that it comes with the definition of every building envelope on every lot. So that me or Chelsea or somebody 10 years from now would not make the same mistake, you know, would not make a mistake on what the side setback would be. So that it would be fully defined and that would be in their parcel file, uh, as well as, um, uh, Mr. Wood has asked us that if it be passed, if there's certain affidavits filed with the plat amendment, that the map be amended, you know, with certain affidavits from other owners to ensure it's all filed at the same time at the courthouse. So those are the two conditions that if you should approve, those I think are essential.
Okay. Is there any comment from council? Questions to Abe?
I have one, if you guys are, if you guys are good. So for the three homes that were built, um, or not built, but started construction, excuse me, uh, the, those individual lots, why would we not, like, what's the difference between doing a blanket variance for the whole thing versus individual lot variances? For the three that good, bad, or otherwise were started without the permit?
I certainly could answer that. I think that's a better question for the applicant.
Okay.
I think they could be done, but they have elected to be listed, and I thought they asked me why they'd ask that.
Okay.
And they've explained it to me, but it's probably better out of there.
Totally fair. Totally fair. Okay. I will, I will leave that one open whenever the time comes. Sorry.
Any other questions?
Not yet, not yet.
You're itching to talk or you want to wait?
No, I can wait.
All right, Mr. Moyes, we'll give you the, or Dennis, whoever wants to go for it, welcome.
I'll, I'll wait until he gives me the, I'll talk. Should be pretty quick. No, I appreciate you all listening to our, our requests here. I want to be clear on a couple of just timeframe things and that's that. We, this was something we talked about in the planning of this and it's actually, uh, I was, until we found out that we had the permit issue, I was under the impression we had that I hadn't read the paperwork correctly. I thought this had all been taken care of back when we originally did this because we were, a big comment, and I say common, it's probably in the ninety, high ninety percent of, of homeowners. When you're placing a house on a lot and there's room, they will say, can I have the extra room on the garage side? Guys, they want access to their backyard. They want to park things over there. That's the best use of their land in their opinion is to have that extra space on, on the garage side. Now, the size of these lots and the, the houses, some of the lots, and this might address your question, Commissioner Swaffer, Councilman Swaffer, uh, some of the lots will be right at the seven and seven if we had that and they would not have the room that they would, they would ask otherwise. Some of the lots are a little bigger and that wouldn't be an issue. However, if we, we, we looked at that and lined the houses out on all thirty-four lots, thirty-six lots. Some of them were fine, some of them were not. And what we didn't want to run into is if we did it on this lot, this lot and this lot, if somebody were to build later on, you would encroach onto that, potentially encroach onto that fourteen foot separation that we were trying to maintain. So that was the original genesis for trying to get this for this entire subdivision, so that those building envelopes be clearly defined as five on one side and a minimum of nine on the other. Some of the lots will be larger than that as far as when we're constructing, but if something happened to us halfway through the subdivision, if a plan changed, if something happened along the way, we would have those parameters to be able to maintain that fourteen foot separation. That was the primary goal is to maintain that, that fourteen foot separation minimum throughout the entire subdivision. And we, we, we plan on building it all out ourselves, but in the event something happened and we weren't able to, we didn't want the next person to end up being in violation if they went seven and seven or to have the town try to figure out which ones have that and which ones don't. So that was the original genesis of the, the request for the variance was, was from the very beginning to have that as an opportunity, discussing with the no parking on the street, to have that as an opportunity for the future homeowners to, uh, better utilize their land. I think it's important to note, if it was just us building our homes on there, we don't need the variance. They will fit. We're asking for the variance for the homeowners, that they can have better use of their land, uh, and more room on the garage side. Uh, and another reason we wanted to, to make it blanket the entire subdivision was to avoid some of the language around certain people getting privileges that other people aren't. So in this community, it would be uniform. Everyone would have the same building envelope to, to work. So, um, the, the permitting issue is a separate issue. That is one that we had, we had turnover and we did not have all of our lines in place and we completely own that. We fixed that. Uh, Dennis is, is on with us now and that will never happen again. So our apologies for that, but I want to make sure that's not. We didn't do that and now we have a problem. We're asking for a variance. That's a separate issue and I just want to make that distinction. Did I get to answer your question?
Um, I mean, I think so, yeah. I, I'll formulate, but yeah, I think I'm good for now.
Okay.
I think if I can jump in if I understood, because I think I understand your question, I understand his response is that, in the sense that, you know, there was a reduction of, we reduced on-street parking. So by having, having that, that gives us, gives them the ability to get more usable land with each one of the people that buy the property, because they don't have the outside program. So if, instead of doing three, as, you know, as I think you were suggesting, we do all thirty-six, so that now they're all uniform and to that point.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to understand the, the logic behind that, I guess, was because to me, as the three were the problem, why would we get a blanket for the whole thing?
And I think looking at, you know, on staff, and I think there's things that, you know, it gets complicated when this lot's this, this lot's that, and every lot's a little bit different. And having a uniform thing for a particular subdivision is actually easier to oversee later on, so.
Our staff's good. They can handle that.
They, they are, they are good, but you know, same time, if we can make life, if we can make life easier for everybody, then I feel like that's.
No, like, so just, just mainly just wanted to understand those, that distinction.
Right, okay. Any other, any questions for Mr. Moyes?
Um, I, I don't have a question for you, Mr. Moyes, but thank you. Um, I, I think in principle, I don't have an issue with this variance. I think the concern that I have is, in recognizing that this wasn't necessarily, this wasn't an intentional oversight, um, and it happened and I worry about future developments and the precedent we might set for, oops, we did this, we've already started construction and now we have to do a, you know, a variance while the development is in process. And does that open the door down the road for, well, we didn't get this variance, we're going to do it however we want. And then we're going to, you know, come and ask for forgiveness after the fact. So not suggesting at all that that's what you did, Mr. Moyes, but that I'm worried about the precedent.
Yeah, and I think to address that councilman, because when it came to our attention that this had happened, um, you know, we did look back at previous communication and there was, you know, I think there was clear communication that that's not what the, that's not the setbacks that were established. However, there was this confusion kind of going on, because I know Mr. Mitchell's there and that was something that was brought up at the original time when we were doing the plat and then it came back. So there was a back and forth, be that as may. We, Abe and I did discuss, like, we could go back there and say, you broke it, you know, and now you need to tear that foundation down. And we honestly sat there for several days trying to decide if that's the direction we wanted to go or not. I will say that the Moyes Family Housing did get a fine. I don't know if they got the tickets yet, but the tickets are there. Um, and they're not insignificant for what it's worth. Um, and what we've done is we just made the decision that, like, we want the densification of residential. We're the ones that said, we don't want on-streets parking, we want it on, on location. And so from our perspective, like, to have more homes that are actually built and there's uniformity made sense to us. And so that's where I was like, that's the reason the variance is made, right? You've got, you're at some point, like, I want to vary what was agreed to. And so that's why the variance made sense. And so that's why when staff approached me about it, I was like, yes, I'm open to a variance. Let's go ahead and explore that. So let's keep that over planning and zoning. Because on the whole, it makes sense. It matches what we're wanting to do for housing-wise. It matches everything we're doing. And regrettably, it happened after we'd already had discussions. Regrettably, it happened after we'd done final plat. Regrettably, it happened after all those things, but at the same time, it's not illogical. So.
Okay.
Nobody's really being harmed. We do have a letter from, you know, as Abe pointed out, the two people who would be impacted were actually okay with it. Um, and so, you know, if they had made a fuss and they were really upset about it, then I was like, okay, now I have a concerned citizen who's being harmed, who's upset. But he says he's not harmed or he's okay with it. So my perspective, this is a, there's no, no fault. I wish you hadn't built, but I already talked to Jason about that. We had a very open discussion about that earlier, too. I say that only to, um, but anyhow, any question, any other questions on that card?
I, I have a question for Chief Cooper, but if he was going to speak, I don't want to jump in front of him, but I do have a question for the chief, if he's able to.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think the question, if I can, is going to be, because the discussion, the question I think you had asked as well as planning and zoning is, are you as, and the fire department concerned about a fourteen foot separation between two buildings?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I apologize. Um, first of all, I'm not a uniform and furthermore, that I'm, I'm not prepared to answer the questions in front of you. Um, I, my intent was to sit in the audience and, and become informed as best I can. I would ask for that latitude before I gave an official opinion. Uh, I would ask a question though. What is the existing, uh, town ordinance on setback distances and residential?
Five foot.
Five foot between each, ten foot total is?
No, seven.
Seven, fourteen feet between building envelopes, seven feet on each, seven is residential. Commercial is theoretically zero, however, fire code requires a minimum of four, so we enforce two feet on each lot unless one pre-exists. So if you buy a parcel with someone built right up to the lot line, then we would say, if you come with a building permit, you have to be four feet off, because that's the total minimum. Um, the seven feet, I don't know. I'm reading the IBC. I see nothing in the IBC that enforces seven feet. It's five, um, in the IBC. I don't know why ours is seven. It's been that way since nineteen seventy-eight or eighty-two or whenever the code took kind of precedent. Um, like the current residential setback from R one all the way through all the residencies to R four is seven foot setbacks. I'll do the best I can to try to give you a little background. Um, generally speaking, the, the concern on setback distances between buildings for fire, specifically for fire, is, is related to the, the radiant heat. If one, if one building burns, you don't want the, to be a conflagration that just moves like a mast stick from, from building to building to building. Uh, the reason why the, the setback distances from a fire perspective are important is, and I, I, I can't remember this from, from memory and I apologize, I'm gonna, I shouldn't even try to cite it, but, um, every, every, every double, uh, distance quadruples the protection and then inversely, if you reduce that, then it, it, it doubles it as you get closer. And I, I, again, I, I, I would be better prepared if I, if I was in the office today, I was in the fire. Um, but the, the, the concern that I would have is by reducing that, you increase the, uh, probability of ignition from radiant heat if there was a fully mall structure that would transfer, uh, to the adjacent, uh, building or, um, if, if there was an immediate fuel, like a, a vehicle or a camper that was, uh, parked between those, those vehicles. That's the reason why, from my perspective as a fire chief, that setback distances are important, um, especially through side setback distances, less so from front and back, but um, side setback distances, usually where the buildings are close to each other. Um, so, um, my request reason is, is that, um, just, you know, let me, let me continue to listen before I give an official opinion. I, I do agree. I think the, the intent of the council is clear that you're trying to find a good solution to work forward and, and find a way to move forward. I'm, I'm on board with that. Um, from what I, from what Abe's report out from the planning and zoning was, that, that seems like a reasonable, uh, recommendation though. And I, I don't know, I just, just here to try to find a good solution and, and party audience.
So allow me to, so just to be clear, I think if I understand correctly, we're talking five, um, five foot and nine foot. So it will remain as a fourteen foot between the building.
It just shifts the.
It just would shift it.
I clarified what the question was originally though.
I'm sorry?
I brought this up originally in planning and zoning and the reason I brought it up is because after driving out there, the pad that's just a pad, there's a fence um, from the property, um, to the south of it, because that, that home is already built, person's already living in it. And it looks really, really close. Um, I went out today and, um, you know, we, I was given a tour and we measured and everything, everything's good. It is, it is more than five feet, but, um, that fence was my concern because of, I was worried, well, what happens then? The fence catches and, and parked right on the other side of that is an RV. Um, and that would be kind of what the plan is for. Um, I'm, I'm more comfortable with it after I've seen it and talked through what all is going on out there, but I wanted your opinion on it specifically. I asked that we get your opinion on it because the fire spread was my concern with these houses closer together.
And to be clear, Chief Cooper's been fighting the fires.
Yes, yes. I knew that was.
No, just, Abe has reached out to him and has just said. Yeah, just.
And I, and thank you for fighting the fire.
And strangely, and strangely enough, there's no cell coverage worth dollars like fire, so. So I, I guess I just want to, because I think what we have to, I'm, I'm looking at it from two perspectives. One, the international building code has it at five. Whether, you know, I think, you know, we have a, an HOA in town that like, I think we've looked at this before, where you have to have a certain garage, a certain size. So I think we have certain things that are aesthetically within our code, because people like seven foot or nine foot between it. We see a maintenance of fourteen foot here. Um, I, I don't think we can do anything that would say, I'm sorry, you can't park an RV here, or you can't park a car here, or you can't have a fence here. All we can.
How many wood piles are next to you?
Right, exactly. So I think we're like, the way I've been looking at it, we're still maintaining fourteen feet. We're opening a building envelope and getting people so they can build it. It's uniform. It makes sense. So I guess that's the way I've looked at it. So I could, you know, that, as, as we're discussing here. Um, if there's anything from the perspective of this variance that actually increases the fire risk other than, and maybe it comes into, because, you know, if that, if that distance shortens, then maybe the firewall between the buildings has to be improved. And that could be something that the builder wouldn't have to do. So that's more of a, and I don't know if that would fall into our variance per se as something else, but, um, anyhow.
I mean, I think you can put any condition you want on variance. I think that is the purview of the council.
So, I mean, and that's where maybe if like, okay, we've actually increased the fire danger. Mr. Moyes, to counteract that increased fire danger, please do X, Y, and Z. So we can either reject the variance or we ask for something different, or C, just say, great, we're going to trust people to be smart, which I assume is a good one. Sorry.
Just to circle back, that was, that was exactly going to be my thought for consideration. I don't, I don't think that it's, it's definitely something I'm going to follow my sword on, but it's something that should be considered is, um, commonly in other jurisdictions, you might see that if there's a two-story building, then you need to increase the, uh, the fire resistance of, of, of both buildings to prevent that radiant heat flux from, from transfer from one building to the other or, or a three-story building. Like, there's, there's ways to, uh, build into local ordinances, protections to address those setback requirements. Um, again, I'm just, I'm not prepared enough that I can, I can make a recommendation tonight, but it's, it's on for consideration when, when your discussion lasts.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Appreciate it, Max. All right. Any other questions from council about this before I open it up?
Uh, well, that, so, thank you, chief. That actually answered my question was, my concern, or my question was, we have nine feet and five feet. Nine feet does allow the, the homeowner to park an RV and then now you have a structure adjacent to a home. And then that minimum setback effectively from RV to the adjoining house is five feet. Could be a wood pile, whatever, but that, we still have that five foot there on the other, the adjacent property there. So, um, that was just the question is.
I mean, to be.
Parking an RV, RV next to there.
I mean, to be fair, is anybody, I mean, go to my mom and dad's house. I mean, you could, you know, there's a gigantic pile of wood that's just right on the. Piles could put piles of wood on both sides and.
Yeah.
Fourteen foot's not, whether it's an RV or.
And for the record, my house is two and a half feet away from my neighbor, so. I, I have no hope, but, um.
Well, and I don't think that we have any way to know, you know, like, what's going to happen on the side of the house. I don't think that's.
No, and that's, yeah.
I mean, I've got a bus next to my house right now.
That's my bus. Yeah, no, that was just my main question was, and I understand, you know, from the developer's perspective, giving the homeowner the flexibility and everybody has a camper, toy hauler, whatever, give them the flexibility that they can park that. And my, that was my question was from a structural perspective, if there's a camper, yes, that does, I mean, there's the heat transfer there to the adjoining building. But in theory, I would, you know, wood pile notwithstanding, we still have five foot on the other side.
Yeah, IBC is, is, is very clear. It's just structured to lot lines, five feet. Doesn't make any reference to what someone may use that five feet for. So with the idea of maintaining ten feet between two residential structures. Now, you get in different occupancies of different IBCs and you can build houses that have, I mean, you see them all over, adjoining walls with two-hour fire rating between those adjoining walls. Or you can get all the way up, we've been having the conversation about a hanger out at the airport and that hanger can be a four-hundred-foot-long hanger that's divided into four different hangers. And there could be a two-hour firewall between each of those joining and it can all be one structure and that meets the code, but um, on a hanger, if you do nothing and you don't put a firewall at all, now you're thirty feet before you put another structure. And so there's all these different acres. I'm not an expert in the code, I just, this is the code I see in front of me. I don't know where the seven foot cuts you off.
Right. All right, um, I'm going to address the other element as I, and Ed and I talked about this as well as, I, you know, I think the idea of giving greater latitude to the PMZ to play with variances is something I've said multiple times that I'm not wanting to do, because it's really not their call. I think their call is to say, this is the code, it matches, it doesn't match. I think what PMZ did on this one is perfect. We, we support this, but because it doesn't match, we can't vote for it. And Mr. Moyes called me up and I was like, that's exactly what they should have done. They should have, I would have actually gotten mad if they voted for it. Um, so, well done.
Well, that's a discussion also to have though, because it, it really is very restrictive as far as it can't be at all self-imposed.
Right. And then, and that's where it comes into the discussion, because like, I'll come in here and say, I think we as a table have said, we want to see increased housing within this community. We as a council are the ones that sit no on-street parking. Yes, that was with the developer, because he was trying to develop the building envelope, but we agreed to that. So is that itself conflicted or is that actually in partnership with us? And I don't think that's PMZ that sits there and, well, oh, wait a second. You know, I think they're an appointed, an appointed board and it's their job to call the ball a foul ball or strike ball. And then it comes to us and we're like, no, no, we're actually the ones that really made that decision. If people have a problem with it, they can say, Mayor Murdock, we want you out of here. We're not voting for you again, right? Um, but I think exposing the citizen commission to that subjectivity actually could be really dangerous on multiple fronts.
Well, and there, you'll see there's other, um, issues that we weren't sure that was met, um, by this request, one being that, um, um, not making this change would, um, deprive the owner of the full use of the land or whatever. Anyway, the problem is we run into this every time we have, um, a hearing, because something that, like in this case, you know, you're still going to have fourteen feet between buildings. You're, you know, it really essentially doesn't change that much. It makes sense where we've limited the, the on-street parking that if we, if we maybe don't do this, we're going to have problems down the line. And so I guess the, the idea behind this is that we, we fight this every single time we have a hearing and it seems a little bit pointless sometimes to have the hearing when we know we can't grant it, because it's such a tight, um, structure, even in a case where it would make sense.
I understand. I mean, Ed and I had some, I, I, I just, I, planning and zoning plays a really critical function and there's always going to be a time that they're just like, we can't manage this, right? And we're just pass about, because I, we were, I mean, I mean, we could look at the example of another town in Wyoming that actually does allow a little bit more subjectivity into the planning and zoning and they're actually, it went to court. Um, it ended up in a really bad decision. So Ed and I have talked about this and Abe have kind of this. So this point in time, I think, you know, maybe there's changes you can make on one side, but I would much rather those decisions come to this table. Okay, so if the council wants to make that difference, we can, but I think it's safer, I think it's safer under the commission myself, because then they don't get exposed to.
Yeah, it just, it seems like though, especially for myself on this, because I, I have, I have this hearing that I go to at planning and zoning and I have to say no. And then it comes. comes here and I say yes, and it looks like I flip-flop.
Yep. But I, I get that, but I think, like I said, I, I think the minutes are recorded nicely. We would support this, but we're, but by the letter of the code, we can approve it. And the commission did exactly what they're there for, so. Ed, any other comments and then I'll open up the public comment.
No, we, um, we addressed some language going forward, which seems to be a duty that they've, something that allows them to, various things, very subjective, but more or less something on, uh, the literal interpretation with adverse impact of the public good or whatever are, unless the community benefit outweighs the strict enforcement or something of that. That puts a lot of more pressure into a situation where if somebody wants to do something and say, well, yeah, this is for the public good and you really can't show that. This one, I, I think you can say is public good, but that's kind of overweight because you've got the parking off the streets, uh, you've still got your fourteen feet, uh, relying use of, more use of the property. But we certainly can go that route and loosely up these restrictions, but I've certainly seen times in the past when those restrictions, it was a good thing that they're there, so.
Yeah.
But the bottom line is all of this.
All right, council, any more questions or comments? I'm gonna want to open up the public. No? All right, is there any public comment on this? No? Yes. Um, I will say that there has been public comment that they're opposed to this, just to be very clear, if there has been comments, I've, I've heard there was reports on Facebook that people are upset about this as well. So just to acknowledge that there is a segment of people out there who are not happy about this. Um, I don't want them to not be heard in that perspective and they feel like, um, that this should have been, should, should have stayed the way it was originally plotted. Is that a fair assessment?
On Facebook, why are you looking at me?
I'm not, I'm asking, because I know your personal opinion and I want to make sure I express it clearly and, and honestly, so. All right, um, any other comment here?
The only thing I would note is if you do move to approve the variance, it should include a statement that you consider the seven conditions and that find that they're met.
Right.
Those are in this.
I'm sorry?
Those are in the staff.
I always try to find it on the page there.
Is there a parent?
Yes, sir.
Follow-up comment, if you still have a follow-up comment.
Yeah.
My own clarification, is this just for the three lots or is this for the entire plot and subdivision?
The whole plot and subdivision, that's correct. And then that, you know, and that goes back to the other point, chief, is like, from our, from my perspective, rather than having a couple of lots and having, you know, different uniform, then that makes it to the imperative of, and then we know it's always fourteen and always twenty, we make sure the setbacks are always maintained. Um, it seems simpler. Now, again, to councilman Swafford's point, we have a very smart staff, so maybe we don't need to make it simpler, but. Now you guys are downplaying it. Now you guys are downplaying it. Okay, okay.
Just one point of clarification on setbacks, because I think, um, I made it at PMZ and we can't hear as well. Subdivide could say, yeah, our house is fit for, make a shift over and give this additional space, but that is not, as soon as these parcels are sold, um, there was a gentleman wrote, you guys a letter, his name was Mike, he was at the planning and zoning hearing. Mike has every legal authority to come in and ask for an addition. He could say, I wanna make my garage bigger, and town staff have to issue permits to whatever the requirements of the code are, either the seven foot setback or is that where he is at, is that now a nine foot setback? And so like, the, the idea is that these lots, from a staff perspective, could very well be built to the lot line at some point in time, all in the future. Um, it's not just the houses they're building today, could be additions or other things.
Eight sixty-three for anybody else looking for it. All right, any other comment?
Mr. Mayor, I defer to Abe on this, but I believe there is a motion to approve the variance. May, it should also include that it's conditioned on, uh, property being replatted to evidence these setbacks and that, uh, all existing lots are to approve as well as the lot owners' mortgage holders. And you can adversely affect, even though it may be a positive effect, people that are already on lots, lots there.
That's right.
And especially the mortgage holders need to approve.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just have a quick comment. I just, I don't know, Mr. Moyes, but I think you have to play by the rules. Can you go ahead and build houses different from what you were supposed to build them or are we, what, value to a sentence? I just, it's like, it's just not playing by the rules. And I'm not trying to attack anybody or be rude, but I mean, how much time have you guys spent on this? It, you know, there should be a fine, there should be a big fine.
There was, trust me, it was maybe a little bit bigger than what Mr. Moyes was looking for. Yeah. So we, you know, and that, to be very clear, it's, yeah, there was a, I mean, it was in, it was the process of Mr. Moye, of, of Moyes' homes being fined started over a month and a half ago. It just, it's taken us a couple of things, have to figure out dates on certain things and what the fee is gonna be and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So yes, he has been, they have been penalized. Yeah, reprimanded, yeah. Council, what's your inclination? If there's a motion, who would like to make it? Well, there should be a motion one way or another. Be clear, it's my recommendation that we pass this variance, just to make these decisions.
No. I'll do it, I guess.
Like, you, you get the big bucks for it.
Yeah, yeah. We all can play the same. So, um, I move that we approve the variance applications submitted by Moyes Family Homes, a variance, uh, from chapter four seventy-five slash, or dash sixty-seven, uh, side yards and four seventy-five dash eighty-nine side yards, allowing the side yard setbacks to be offset to five foot and nine foot alternating lots, um, on lots one through thirty-six in the amended pronghorn subdivision, or just pronghorn crossing subdivision of the town of Pine Dale. The application meeting all requirements as required. Do I need to read all, and just to simply say the seven? With that, yep, having considered the seven conditions to meet a variance, um, and also to make it conditional on replating of the property.
And all existing owners, lot owners or controllers.
And all existing lot owners and mortgage holders.
That was a long motion to get that one in. Is there a second?
A second.
Ed. It has been moved by Councilman Swafford, second of a Councilman Lottis. I don't actually have the exact foreword in front of me, I was at the other page, I'm sorry. To approve the variance request by Moyes Family Homes, am I right? Going to the top page, what page is that?
Forty-one.
Forty-one, thank you. Yes, there is. So, by Moyes Family Homes, a variance in four seventy-five dash sixty-seven side yards and forty-seven-five dash eighty-nine side yards, allowing the side yard setbacks to be offset five foot and nine foot alternating lots on lots one through thirty-six. Correct. In the amended pronghorn crossing subdivision of the town of Pine Dale, having reviewed all seven qualifications, the application meets all requirements as required for one sixty dash twenty-six, see, three, condition that the, the subdivision be replatted and then all existing lot owners and mortgage holders approved and writing. That's it, discussion. I was repeating that frame, you see, just to be clear.
Mr. Mayor, I have another question for discussion, perhaps it can happen in separate motion, uh, staff would for direction, how to handle the conditioning on variance as far as timing. If I cannot issue building permits typically till the variance is issued and with conditions attached to it, um, if this is a matter of going through the processes, it's probably gonna take them a month or so, maybe longer. Some of those signatures could take a couple of months. Uh, if there is a way that we could have a condition that a lot, uh, mortgages are tough to get signatures on if it has to go through, maybe affidavit makes it a little simpler. But I need direction from staff that after this meeting, can I issue those building permits, not those three, uh, homes, so they can continue construction, or do those three building permits still be held by staff until the variance is completed? Mr. Wood?
Great question, Abe.
So the minutes lack with approvals from the, uh, two lot owners of the mortgage are conditioned of the motion. I can, I guess, no, you cannot issue, you would not be able to issue a building permit if they weren't to pursue building, they would do it at their own risk because if one of, one of those two property owners doesn't approve, then you can't have an amended plat and that's the condition of the variance.
On receipt of the affidavits?
Oh.
I'm just looking for.
The affidavits are.
Winter's coming, so I'm trying to be helpful.
Oh, you're saying not waiting, getting the affidavits in, but the amended plat process hasn't been pursued?
Uh, the plat has to come back to town council. It could be likely back at the next meeting, which is second meeting in September, maybe it could be filed shortly thereafter, but all the signatures have to come after the approval of the town, which means the town engineer, the mayor, clerk, plus all of the signers that we did in the affidavits that had to be filed in the clerk's office. So I'm just, if I need to hold, I can. Um, I do think, at this point from my understanding, and maybe this is where Mr. Moyes could provide some input on the agreements that he has with the other two property owners, perhaps there's a way we could give them sixty days or ninety days or something within that to get those things accomplished, or they can take advantage of nice weather. If this variance is gonna go through, then let's let them build when the weather is nice, not in November when they're out there trying to stick frames homes because it takes two, two months to get through the plat process, so.
Can I ask a point of clarification, maybe through Mr. Wood?
Yeah, please.
If we're not, if, if we are not diminishing the building envelope of the law, is it still adversely the mortgage? You still affect the subdivision of that block, is any change considered adversely or just? If, but not any change, but when you're admitting the whole plat?
Yeah, because the plat, your, your mortgage holder is gonna be holding a lot within the plat to do that.
Would there be, would there be mechanisms where you would allow us to pursue under our own risk? At some point down the road, maybe a signature doesn't come through, something along those lines, we would then have to address that on, at that point.
Yeah, I think that's the question that you'd ask them.
Well, I, well, I indicated that I believe once the variance is approved and they start their process, if they want to pursue building, they'd still leave that a permit, but it will be at their risk. Then get down the line, Bank of America refuses to sign the mortgage amendment, uh, excuse me, they refuse to sign the affidavit, they refuse to approve the plat. Uh, and those types of things have been done in the past, at least in the county fairly.
So I'll be the slide.
Very, very, it's been done several times. You have multiple landowners, you want to revise, amend lots in a plat, and somebody lives in Delaware and you send them a plat, an affidavit, they file it and it's noted on the plat that approval was done by affidavit. That's, that process is not unusual at all.
And you're not sending a plat all across America to try to get it signed?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Want to make it different then if we just did the three? So that that wouldn't affect the other lots or the other landowners? If we just did the three building sites with the variance and then they could figure that out later and they could have their.
I don't know where the three are in relationship to the other lots.
I don't either. I'm just asking if we could do the three.
Can you answer me your questions? The, the short answer, yes, you can issue it for three lots. If you issue it for the three lots, you will have a five-foot setback followed by a seven on the one next to it. And now we have shrunk the building envelope, between, the distance between building envelopes from fourteen feet to twelve feet on a kind of.
They are instanced with the subdivision.
Okay.
So yes, it can be done, but that's the reperfection.
That's the reperfection. All right, thank you.
I'm concerned, Ed, that if we do, if I understood what you were saying, if we go that route and we say, we're gonna issue this and we're gonna let you proceed on building the buildings without a building permit, then we're literally putting them in infraction of the law that we just recently gave them a fine for, right? Because now they're still building without a building permit.
I was looking at, I understand, when they're moving at their own risk.
Right.
But we, that they're also moving for approval of the setbacks and they have to get the plat down.
Somehow or another, we have to kind of like, give a, a variable, a variable approval on the building permit that says, yeah, you can go ahead, but if, if this doesn't go through, then it's on you, you have to tear the building down or.
So, Mr. Mayor.
I'm like, I wanna, I wanna.
Other things not tied to variance, I mean, that, uh, we have conditioned building permits on acceptance of millennial construction until we receive, you know, fire marshal sign off, those type of, we've done different things in the past that should they violate conditions of the building permit of that condition, of the permit.
Okay.
So they'll say this would never be done, that we would revoke that permit and it would be due to those fines or until resolved, um, that, that permit could be.
So you're suggesting that we approve the variance and then we give them a conditional building permit that the other, other conditions of the.
Right.
Are, are settled.
And at the end of that ninety days, if that's not settled, then we revoke the building permit, they issue fines of up to two hundred dollars a day per instance, per day, until that is resolved.
Right.
Um, or they come back to this table and say, Mr. Mayor, we've been working at it, Mr. Mayor and council, this condition, you would ask for an extension because this mortgage is being difficult.
Definitely, yeah.
Or, I don't know if that was, I mean, he's, he's the attorney, so.
You're comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
Mr. Moyes?
Sorry, I'm out of my native words.
Why not?
That's not me. Um, maybe a, a tweak to this could be to grant the variance for the three that we have and with the condition and, and while we process the, the subdivision wire, with the understanding that the lot south of, there's three lots, this one south would be negatively impacted immediately if the entire subdivision variance wasn't accomplished. So we would, maybe with the, we have to be grant this, we can't pull a permit on anything on this lot until the variance is, is approved, that would allow us to, to continue with this one, because this would be the only lot that would be impacted with that remaining seven foot next to the five foot, and maybe a conditional, we don't touch that lot until we have this resolved. And so in worst-case scenario, Bank of America whoever doesn't sign it, we would have one lot there, we just lot eight.
I think so. Lot eight is one that's under construction. This is.
Lot nine.
Lot nine is under construction. It's got a halt order on it. There's a house on lot seven. These two lots are under construction. This one has a lot on it. So this is the one adversely impacted and that's the gentleman that you guys have the letter from.
I'm sorry, that, that would, this Mike, that is, yeah. He had sent the letter, right?
Sixteen nineteen, right?
Yeah, sixteen nineteen.
So, Mr. Moyes, the proposal from the staff is that we approve the variance and then we give you a conditional building permit to proceed, but that within ninety or a hundred and twenty days, you have to have all the signatures and the plat completed to be done. And thus, of course, you know, I guess if you had Bank of America, it's gonna cause you problems, because Bank of America, council probably has dealt with mortgage companies before and we could probably give you a little bit of an extension on that. Not that I'm encouraging it, but that, or if we're. But that, or if we're to do what you were just suggesting, we could, I suppose, table this motion because this motion has now been made. Could be tabled, I think, under Roberts. And then we could turn around and approve the variance on those three lots and then we just have to come back.
I think if you guys are willing to proceed under the conditional, that's just why we're not making any remarks for.
Right. And I just, to be very clear is that, you know, if we do do that, then you, I mean, you only have two owners. So hopefully you can get affidavits from them. That should be fairly simple, I would hope. And then, you know, and I don't know how many mortgage companies we're actually looking at, but I'm just going to look at you and just say, if we say 90, I really don't want you to come in here and ask for an extension. Really don't want to see an extension on this. I mean, we could probably get there, but I, I, I'm sorry. I don't want to do something that sets you up for failure again tomorrow and where I can't having both and cross eyed at each other. Yeah.
I would much approve or prefer, Abe's idea about the condition as opposed to picking and choosing the three now and the rest later. It might also be better to go with the 120 as opposed to 90, even with large mortgage companies. It's kind of like pulling deep in my experience, but.
Yeah.
They don't know where to go.
Like I said, I, I want to make sure that you succeed and get this done, but I don't want to come back again, so. So the motion on the table right now is the variance. We don't have to consider, I guess there would be a second motion that we would then authorize.
Second motion.
A second motion to authorize the conditional building permit for the 120 days. I know there are several other things that the Moyes family has to get out there done as well, roads and streets and other things that are moving proceeding forward. Dennis is having fun, I know. You're out of the office and actually out there, you know. All right, so there has been a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Swafford and Loftus, is everybody comfortable moving forward on the motion? All right, all those in favor of approving the motion to approve the way of though. Sorry, I'm on page 67 already. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries five zero. Then we will now create, if I can have a motion from council to authorize a 120 day conditional building permit.
For lot five, six and nine.
Five, six and nine.
Five, six and nine.
That's correct. I just want them to make sure.
I move that we approve a 120 days conditional permit for building on lots five, six and nine.
Second. Move by councilman Swafford, uh Loftus, second by councilman Coceba, to approve a 120 day condition, conditional building permit for lots five, six and nine, Moyes family helps for the construction. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero as well. Good?
Thank you, councilman.
No, I mean, we're excited. Like I said, I mean, we, we need more affordable, attainable houses in our community. We're excited about what you're doing. Can't wait to see more of them get built and more people living in them, so. Hey, council? That's it. Abe, good? All right, let's move on to the next item. Interior meter installation request from the museum of the mountain man. Now we're getting into tough things. Abe, pretty straightforward, just one part from the inside.
They, this building is literally a marth fax building that we just need to control the humidity in. I think it's probably going to use less than 100 gallons a month of water. I think it'd be far safer in the building and it's the museum. If we ever said, hey, we have a problem with the meter, we call the museum and we get in. Obviously, we have the same conditions on there that we've asked for every commercial building. Interior meter with some conduit and where they place the AMR. And as I have no problems with approval of those conditions, me and Spencer have discussed it. Spencer is also on board and we have.
And for the material as well.
And for the material to go to poly pipe is very standard practice at this point, but the standards are not changed. So we intend to tackle that this way.
Yeah.
Uh, we intend to tackle that this one, clean those up and we can stop bringing those to you guys.
So that's two motions that are related to one another. Counsel, there's any questions from staff? Or do E two and E three?
I triggered Richard's type from that book at the same time. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, a move that we approve, a waiver from chapter 160 dash 15A seven, allowing an interior meter installation at the storage building located at 752 East Henix Street. Such approval containing the following conditions: the meter shall have a conduit to the exterior of the building. AMR, I don't know what AMR is, but.
AMR, that's perfect.
Okay, cool. AMR shall be mounted, then 42 to 48 inches high on the exterior. A final simplified map should be provided to town staff for record keeping and easy access and an agreement from the property owner allowing access to the town for maintenance of the equipment.
Second. All right, I'll bet AMR is a meter receiver.
Um, that's what I was just, I was like, just give me what the acronym means, man.
All right, move by councilman Swafford, second by councilman Boyce, to approve a waiver from 160 dash 15A seven, allowing an interior meter installation, the storage building for the museum of the mountain man. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is E three, this is a change of material, moving to poly pipe, which is where we're going. Okay, motion.
I move that we approve the waiver on the construction material for the museum of the mountain man.
Second. Yeah. Move by councilman, the conditions on there?
Yeah, yeah.
What?
None. Spread a lot. I was like, if I could, yeah.
Councilman Loftus, want to review the par motion?
You know, I would if my.
All right, move by councilman Loftus, second by councilman Coceba, check.
Yes, totally.
To approve a waiver of the water service line materials required by the town of Pine Hill construction standards from type K copper to CTE poly pipe, the approval of said waiver shall be conditioned upon the service line and all connections shall be reviewed by the town of Pinedale, Water Department or prior tobacco, and the service line should be equipped with trace wire meeting the town of Pinedale, trace wire specification as detailed in the proposed construction standards. I got to tell you, I didn't know we had trace wire specification.
Oh, yeah.
That's pretty.
When you don't have copper or steel in the ground, you got to trace it some.
No, I get that.
Fire better anyway.
No, I get that, but I just didn't know we had like a whole little document.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item, airport, it's taking fun now. Wes is on the line, turned on the camera, we can see a smiling face.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I'll do my best to meet your needs and then go over to Mr. Warble, who was present during the discussion of this airport board meeting. The intention of today is a couple of things, not the first priority, we would like to locate the new transient hangar, Pinedale Airport. And Wes is going to walk you guys through kind of our discussions with state fire marshal and kind of the pros and cons and the recommendation that came from Pinedale Airport Board. But before we go there, I guess one other priority to discuss is just the implications of the state fire marshal office and some budgeting, concerns and considerations as we move forward on this hangar project. We did meet with the state fire marshal's office onsite with our local inspector and then we also have the plan, uh, plan chief, Mr. Jeff Sheen, Sheridan on the line, who interpreted what, what can we do with the hangar and what can we not? And size is, is an issue for concern. The current code is written in a fashion of ED. 12,000 square feet, which would be 100 by 120, with fire suppression. It used to be 22,000 square feet, it is now 12,000 square feet. And so we are, we have asked our consultant to give us a cost estimate of what does this building look like at 120,000 square, I'm sorry, 12,000 square feet? And what does it look like if we do our 15,000 square foot building with fire suppression? They have informed us that we will have that estimate this Friday. When I receive it, I will send it to you guys and we will likely be discussing this again at a future meeting. I will say some of the challenges that we have to maintain with owners is we will not be able to fit on a 12,000 square foot building some of the jets that our customers are asking for. But what we have to decide is, is that worth it or not? And that's a challenging question that once we have all of the chips on the table, we can consider what that cost is and if it's worth it or not. But for today, I don't think it changes the discussion of where do we put this hangar and how do we plan for the future of protecting it for moving forward? And that's where I'm returning over to Mr. Warble.
Wes?
Yeah, thanks, Abe. Evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, yeah, I think Abe teed it up pretty well. I had a good discussion with the fire marshal, but yeah, so the, the fire suppression has come up. And as you can imagine with the water situation at the airport, that is not going to be a cheap endeavor, but one we are considering because of the implications of getting that larger fleet into that larger hangar would be, would be a tremendous benefit. But in order not to have you guys kind of make decisions in a vacuum, we're getting some cost estimates put together and, and we'll have more discussions on that very soon. But like Abe said, kind of want to figure out what the future layout looks like for, for the hangers. Because, you know, apron frontage at, at your airport and a lot of airports is prime real estate. And so we want to protect that as best we can while not kind of painting ourselves in a corner with a unusable chunk of ground to kind of set the, the framework. If we don't do a two hour firewall, we're essentially going to be looking at a 50 foot spacing. And that's come from the, the, the fire marshal and planner, you guys. If we, each structure has a two hour firewall, we could basically stack them together on, right next to each other. Now, with, you know, buildings that large, with controlling the snow coming off the roof, we won't want those, you know, right next to each other. But we kind of looked at what the spacing might look like, what the implications of that are. So I think you should be able to see my screen here. This was kind of just the first initial look at if we did a 50 foot spacing, what that would look like. Everything's got a pretty good even spacing here. If we did look at shortening that up and requiring a two hour firewall, which would allow us to basically pick the spacing that we were doing, to see if we could fit a fourth building in there. You can see I've overlaid, this is Kirby's hangar, I've overlaid his lot in here. And you can see that kind of pinches things a little bit further. So even if we were to shrink this down to 20 feet, we still couldn't quite get another building in there. If we shrunk it down to 15 feet, we're still pretty hard pressed to get another building in there without encroaching on an existing lot line. So where we kind of ended up with the discussion was, I think, three hangers, larger hangers is going to be what is likely going to be put in there and what we would recommend and what the airport board was in agreeance with is we go ahead and the airport will plan on requiring those buildings have a two hour firewall. And that will, it does obviously come at an added cost, but that does provide kind of long-term flexibility for spacing those hangers out, whereas if we don't have those firewalls, we're, we're going to be married to 50 feet. And that's assuming life-size hangers go through here. This hangar here is kind of what we're looking at for you guys. If somebody showed up and wanted to build a 150 by 150 foot hangar, it's certainly a possibility. We really wouldn't have that option without requiring a firewall. And so what we would suggest is we would space this about 50 feet from your, this is the self-serve avgas fuel tank here. We could actually get within 25 feet of that, but we would protect some space here to maybe in the future add some, maybe some FBO office space or something to that effect. And then requiring those two hour firewalls would give us kind of the best long-term flexibility. If somebody wanted to come in and build a larger hangar or if, assuming, you know, somebody came in with similar sized hangers, we're, that'll give us the best flexibility and not necessarily paint ourselves in a corner. In the event that we do end up with maybe a smaller space here, talking with Abe and Riley, snow storage out there, when they're plowing snow, they move a lot of snow out there. Wouldn't be the worst thing in the world for adding some snow removal equipment storage in the future, just kind of that long-term layout. If we do end up with kind of a chunk here, if, if we end up with a kind of a hangar configuration of this. So that was the discussion we had at the airport board. They were in support of just moving forward with kind of citing the, this hangar here for you guys in, in this area here and plan on you, on installing a two hour firewall and requiring future hangers to have a two hour firewall to kind of help us get this thing set where the location is. So Abe, I don't know if I missed anything or you had anything else to add?
No, I think that pretty well sums it up. I would, I would agree with the assessment. I think we should use everything in our power to protect that apron frontage. It's hard to say what the future will bring. And you could say, well, we could still fit three hangers, 50 feet, 50 feet, 50 feet, but we don't know if someone's going to want to put 80 footers in there or a 200 foot hangar. And so I think this protects the most apron space for future development at the airport. I think it's top line. Apron's expensive to build.
So proposals except the two hour firewalls at 15 feet or?
We can go all the way down to zero, but I would say in the future, we probably keep somewhere between 15 and 20 feet, 15 buildings for snow storage.
Okay. And you want a motion for us or you just want to nod from ahead?
Just judging how things have went at the airport in the past, I think it's safe to have a motion that has a recommendation from the airport board and a decision by the town council so that we can give Wes clear marching orders and he doesn't get jerked around with four different decisions in the next four months.
What?
I think that would be a little cold.
That doesn't sound. The office is done with not more than councilmen.
I, I will say we, and, and who goes to Wes and Riley, who's going to run us through this, the airport board, we did have a good discussion about it. We all get along, so I would say it was a, it was a unanimous recommendation to proceed with the two hour firewall to give us the most flexibility and preserve apron space for whatever comes down the road, so.
Sounds like the beginning of a motion, I think.
No, I, sure, happy to make said motion. Mr. Mayor, I move that we proceed with a, the recommendation from the airport board in installing a two hour firewall in, or moving forward with the design of a two hour firewall with the proposed hangar. Does that cover what you need?
With the proposed site.
With the proposed site of the hangar.
As identified in the document.
Wes, save the document.
I'll second. All right, the move by councilman Coceba, second by councilman Boyce, to approve the sighting of hangar, our first hangar here, as indicated on the map, with two hour firewalls, preserving as much space on the apron as possible. Good enough? You got the motion from Stan?
Did Wes have something on?
Wes, any comments?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Move and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Abe's looking about waiting for the motion carries.
We did also just quickly have a, a, a long conversation about fire suppression and water on the airport and I imagine that'll come to the council at some point to burying tanks and just playing, planning for the future. I know we had talked even hypothetically about piping water from the town down and just seeing, starting to talk about costs between burying some big tanks or.
Well, there is discussion. There could be a well, we could put a well.
A well.
We have a well that produces about 20 gallons a minute right now.
So you'd have to store and then have it for fire suppression to.
Sign up.
Yeah. Probably is a bill that they have to have like, I don't know the exact size yet. The way it was explained to the state fire marshal to us is we, if we size appropriately to fit the biggest hangar, so if we sized it for 150 by 150, it can serve all of the hangars. It could serve this hangar, it could serve our current FBO, it could serve any future building at the airport, as long as it's below the spec of what that fire suppression will be, it has to be the largest structure on. And so without just, is that a 50,000 gallon tank underground with a fire pump delivering those flows? Possibly. A 50,000 gallon tank would take two days to fill in our current well and that could certainly be done. But what is the surcharge rate and how does that affect the capital lessons for, it's way beyond that.
Well, the flip side of this, well, not the flip side, but the addition to this discussion, we are in discussions with the Forest Service and others about making this into a fire center, or we would actually make this into a full-time base for. So if you were to pull, and where was I? I was talking to a couple of senators, and I forget which city I've been in, because I've been in so many lately, but they really liked the idea of the Town of Pinedale increasing our water line to serve other areas to, you know, essentially harmonize our capital across, across more service lines. So, you know, if you were to say, hey, let's bring a water pipe from the Town of Pinedale to the airport, there are communities in the area that could probably take advantage of that. For example, Barge might be happy to have water out there. So there is a discussion where that could, that could become a discussion. So.
That changes, that changes everything too on the fire suppression.
Oh, yeah.
If you have municipal line, then you don't have to have so much storage of water.
Right.
Because we at the camp have thirty-seven thousand five hundred gallons of water and storage to meet the requirements.
Yeah.
And that's just for the, that's just for the camp building, which is fifteen thousand square feet. But.
I mean, we're looking at.
Yeah. That does give you an idea.
That gives you an idea. Fifteen thousand square feet, and I have to have thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
Ooh.
In our.
That math doesn't extrapolate well.
So.
Um, council.
Not for, for the.
Right.
To get a hangar, yeah.
So your rating is not the amount, just the amount of the water, the delivery system of how fast you can deliver, correct?
Right. There's a, there's a fire pump up there that had to be rated to that system.
Three phase power.
Um, we don't have three-phase power, so we have a special pump.
Okay.
Special pumps cost more. So, so just, just the camp fire suppression is right at four hundred thousand dollars.
Some, some odd sense, so. Even cited properly, it could benefit a lot of citizens beyond the Town of Pinedale, just having somewhere where Chief Cooper could stop with the engine and fill off of it as well. Probably be good for the system. So if it was cited like land side, so that pump could deliver even to a truck, that probably be official regardless of just state or municipal.
Well, you'll have to have a fire department connection.
Yeah.
Because that'll be code.
Yeah.
So you'll have to have that anyway.
We had talked a couple of years back on possibly future state of the water system ending up down near Barge area. So, I mean, even past.
It would lower the cost of our, of our citizens.
It would be a plus.
Water rate.
We're gonna put a fire.
Yes.
Value gain.
We're gonna put a fire base there. They'll have to have that.
Yeah.
Or else we'd have to have a series of wells.
Yeah, that was the discussion.
That would help our water, our water use.
Which you go for these, well, this is your tank.
You have to be able to fill an aircraft like an hour.
It's about, it's about nineteen to twenty-three, something.
We'd have to have a storage tank.
Ballpark.
Storage tank refills the aircraft.
It's almost, that's what we've been working on all week. I was actually, I, today. They're using those tanks.
Filling trucks and.
Well, they're filling, they're filling pots.
It's tired people. To say, if we had to fire at the park camp, it'd probably be a good thing for us in a lot of different ways. But we'd have to, I think you have to refill the aircraft with an hour or so. You know, if we didn't have water running out there, we'd have to have a storage tank that could refill the planes that we end up refilling from our well. There's a, you know, we have to make sure, so. It's complicated.
How many gallons is one of those airplanes? Eight thousand?
Eight? Ooh, I think that seems high, but.
I don't know.
Well, he said eight. I just repeated it because he.
I don't know. Well, so, one of the things that's going on with like the fire that's going on here is all the airplanes are ending up at Pinedale, airplanes and helicopters at our airport are dry. So we just feel them, they either scooping off Little Lake if they're on fixed wing, or helicopters are dipping off puddles and palms and the Green River, I think, even. I don't know. All of the sources they're using up at the fire, all of the thing, all of the aircraft are being returned, they're coming from Pocatello .
Yeah.
We need, because they can mix.
They mix up there.
They.
If we became a fire camp, we'd be.
In my, I, maybe Wes knows what it takes to mix retardant, but it probably is some formal requirements, but I imagine if you had the right amount of storage there, you could probably come to that conclusion pretty quick of what does it take minimally to be able to, to mix retardant and at least make the water systems so we can deliver that. There might be other infrastructures.
That'd be. I mean, I'd be curious to know that personally, but I'm also just curious for the town's perspective as well, like, that's something I'm sure we could do.
So I, I've designed the seat base and the V-LAT seat base and so the seat base in Rock Springs and the V-LAT and the seat base in Casper, and the, the mixing of it, it's all contracted out, so we just give them space for tanks and then a piping system to get it to the aircraft. So really, the rest of it's handled on the contractor side, the, the actual mixing part. But water is a big part of both of those bases.
How much water does, does helicopters carry, by the way? Out of curiosity.
I, I'm not positive off the top of my head. The water is more for, because they're not gonna fill, necessarily fill them up with water at a place like that. The water is more for washing down their equipment and for, they'll typically have their, install some tanks as well, and it's largely for, for washing down things, because when they fill up their, uh, their aircraft with retardant, they make a mess of things, and that water is to help keep, keep things clean.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have a council car washing day at Red Club.
Yeah.
The retardant spuds are all pink up there. Oh, yeah, we, we, we were up there today. There's several of our vehicles on the edges that.
Finish with those.
Spod.
Three thousand, two thousand.
I'm happy for silver.
Looking that up. Abe, was one of those helicopters used, looks like Iraq, the Iraq, the Iraq war?
There's a Chinook out there.
There, there was a couple of years ago, one, I think maybe the Roosevelt Fire had a Chinook that had been associated with that.
National Reserve already met that, but since they, and they haven't done anything that I'm worried. Yes, I think they're here in case of evacuation.
Right. The helicopter was involved in that or?
We had two Black Hawks here.
Okay. Was that it? Because Morensik was telling me that one of the helicopters actually had a seat that he had sat on or something like that.
Black Hawk, baby.
Okay, yeah, that would make, I would thank you, because I was sitting there like, what the heck was a Chinook doing like that? Like, it was not making any sense to me. That makes more sense. Okay.
So that double-propped one, that double-propped one is almost four thousand gallons, the big.
Of water?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
So it was flying, it was flying yesterday, if you want to see some pictures.
Are they dipping out of the green? That's what I heard.
Yeah, they're dipping out of the green. Yep.
And whose water rights they, I'll check. All right, that's great. Let's go on to the next item, which is the presentation of the bills for September eighth. I move that we approve the bills for September eighth twenty twenty-five in the amount of six hundred forty-three thousand seventy-four dollars and twenty-six cents, paid with checks three one seven four six through three one seven eight two.
Second.
All right, the move by councilman Voice, second by councilman Cosiba to pay the bills on September eighth, the amount of six hundred forty-three thousand seventy-four dollars and twenty-six seven, checks number three one seven four six and three one two seven three one seven eight two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item would be adjournment.
I move adjourn.
The second. Oh.
Councilman Loftus can have that.
Everybody wants.
All right, and then move by councilman Swafford, second by councilman Cosiba, that we adjourn at six twenty-eight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Check it out.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great.
Amy, can I, do you have another blue pen down there that?
They're hungry. They're hungry because.